This is for the successor agency alone.
The joint city council and successor agency.
Okay, we'll call for the council.
Council members Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sinanian, Mayor Weaver.
Here, and for the successor agency.
Board members Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Sinanian, Chair Weaver.
Here, and your report please.
The agenda for the June 18, 2013, joint public meeting of the city council and successor agency was posted on Thursday, June 13, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And before the body at item one is Director of Community Development regarding financing options for the Central Library rehabilitation project, and at 1A is a council motion providing direction to staff.
Okay, Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, sir, recognizing that we obviously are short two council members, but also because the subject matter that we want to present to you is rather complex and multifaceted with several different options, we wanted to do this in two parts today. I have our Director of Economic Development Phil Landsafame and our City Librarian, or Director of Library Arts and Culture Cindy Cleary, provide to you an overview of the different funding scenarios for the Central Library renovation project, take feedback from council, and then return to you next week for actual specific direction on a path forward. But this is as much about sharing information, updating council, and getting your feedback just on the preliminary options such as they are today. So with that, I'll bring Phil up, and in doing so introduce this topic by way of, since the mid-1990s, we have been looking at the renovation of the Central Library, especially with the advent of the downtown specific plan and the Arts and Entertainment District having the library act as an anchor for that district. The council, acting as the redevelopment agency board, had sold 2011 tax allocation bonds, and those taxable proceeds could have been used for any number of things, and leveraged along with the 2010 tax exempt bonds to do this project, to do any number of projects up to and including the library project. As you know, the 2011 bonds were, are disallowed from being used, they're sitting in suspense, and so they are on the sideline. And that being the case, we have resented, cultivated, and now presenting to you a series of different options for your consideration. So with that, Phil.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council and successor agency, as Mr. Ochoa said, we've been planning a rehabilitation of the library for several years, and we got more defined in the last few years when the city council redevelopment agency adopted it, a master plan that included the Central Library, the ARC, and Central Park, together with the Paseo, to connect to the more commercial parts. Since that time, the library has done some visioning and presented a design to the council that they approved, and then moved forward. So by way of a quick review, scope of the project, one of the main features is to reorient the access to north-south, so that it connects with our Art and Entertainment District, and have an east-west access that is a Paseo that runs alongside the library. We'll do some exterior improvements, plaza areas, and upgrade landscaping. We'll inside the building, upgrade some of the operating systems and the building systems, mechanical systems, plumbing systems, electrical systems. We'll reorganize interior spaces to make it more, to address today's current need of the library patron. We're looking at some new or reconsidered programming areas, which will include some incubator or maker space for the library that really ties it in with an economic development perspective. And then, as we were going through this design, we realized that it would be good to do some structural upgrades of the building. Not that the building doesn't meet code or is unsafe, but we think we could, with this project, do some structural upgrades. The project addresses these areas, urban design certainly, by reorienting and connecting the organization of different library services to meet that need of the patron. Modernization, we'll upgrade some technology and get systems up to current standards. Historic preservation, this is a brutalist building, is the type of architecture. We want to make sure that we have future eligibility maintained. Accessibility, we will improve access for disabled people throughout the building, and then wayfinding will improve how the patron uses all those services within the building. This is a quick rendering, this is currently Harvard, which would become the main entrance. This is a shot of the great reading room interior, where stairs now are here, currently those stairs are right here. So that's a look at what the project would be. We had originally pegged this around $10 million when we were sizing our bond, and we allocated that amount of money when we issued the 2010 tax-exempt bond. And there you see it at the top, it was our, it was our hope that we would do that. As we went through, we found that the cost had risen to $13 million, and then some structural upgrades we want to do. Total is now about 15 to 15 and a half million. So we know we have $10 million in our 2010 bond, so we needed to augment that. Some of the ideas that we have for this going forward then was to combine the 2010 with a tool called New Market Tax Credits. Those are federal tax credits. What we found in going through that process, new for us, is we could not put those two financing instruments together. We looked at, in that case, we were going to use $10 million of bonds and $5 million of New Market Tax Credits. We flipped the idea and said, let's see if we can get more in New Market Tax Credits and use less bonds by splitting up the property and really defining it. There's probably more cost than tax credits would provide. Finally, we-
And Phil, just the test for the 2010 bonds is that they're tax-exempt bonds?
Yes.
And that's why we, those two are incompatible with one another?
Right. Under the New Market Tax Credits, we will need to convey the library building to a private entity, and that's why you can't mix the two. We also looked at using 2011 bonds, as was mentioned earlier. There was a bill in the Assembly that originated in the Assembly this year, 981, that would have allowed us to use those. Were that the case, we could have either funded it altogether with 2011, used some combination of 2010 bonds, or the New Market Tax Credits. Unfortunately, that bill died in committee and did not make it through the Assembly. So we're left with some options to use. We could use New Market Tax Credits for a bit, for some of it. The General Reserve, we would have to go into the General Reserve and take some money for this project, and then a portion of 2010 bonds. And I'll go through the dollar amounts in each of these. Combination using 2010 bonds, gas tax. In this scenario, we would take money that was allocated in the 2010 bond from Central Avenue and put it to the library, and then augment that with gas tax. What that does is then eats into dollars available citywide. But we would still need a portion of General Reserve. We could do a combination of 2010 bonds and the General Fund Reserve. We could use 2010 bonds, downsize the Paseo and parking lot project, and then some mix of gas tax and General Fund Reserve. Or we could reduce the scale of the library to do just those structural rehabs that we want, but really would then defeat the purpose behind the whole rehabilitation project.
You do have an option six.
I'm sorry?
You do have an option six.
We'll ask you for those, but if I can go through these-
Yes.
Then you'll have input for it. One thing, whenever we mention using General Fund Reserve, the strategy would be to take the 2011 bonds and replenish that. We would either do that through direct proceeds, if legislature next year makes those available, or if the state orders us to defees those bonds, there will be a savings of about $750,000 to the city that we would use to replenish the General Reserve Fund. So in any time we're suggesting use of the reserve, it goes along with the replenishment through a overtime set aside of the savings. So this is how the first one looks. New Market Tax Credits, we think we have somebody that, a couple of groups that are willing to invest net $5 million. This would require $7 million from the General Fund Reserve, and we'd use $3 million of bond proceeds. The big pro on this one is that we take advantage of some federal tax grant and credits that we could use. It would also allow us to use bond proceeds, 2010 bond proceeds, on other projects that come up in the downtown. The big downside on this is the large amount of General Fund Reserve that would be required to be contributed. It also goes along with a complex process that, over seven years, for the New Market Tax Credits. But again, those are, it's not free money, but it's a federal grant and credit that we can take advantage of. On the bond proceeds, on this one where we use gas tax, we would, as I said, take that $3.5 million that was allocated for Central, put it to the library, use gas tax to backfill that cost on Central Avenue, and then we would have, we would need an investment of $1.5 million from the General Fund Reserve. Pros on this, we can fund it with our existing funding and authorities, it doesn't require any kind of complex project, it doesn't affect the Paseo or Lot 10. Of the downside is that it takes gas tax away from other parts of the city for use in the library. This is pretty straightforward, we would use our $10 million in bonds, that additional cost beyond what we originally anticipated, we would ask the General Fund to invest that, again repaying that or replenishing that over time. Pros here, we have the existing funding, doesn't require a complex process to get those federal funds, and we could leave other projects unaffected, gas tax could be used citywide. The downside is it too is a large contribution from the General Fund. This is kind of a mix of things, where we would use bond proceeds, all of them, we would downsize the Paseo and the parking lot project to the tune of about $1 million. The biggest hit on this would be, we're right now contemplating a right turn lane from westbound Colorado to northbound Brand. If we were to do this, we would be unable to put in that right turn lane. It's not required, but it would be a nice feature to have as we grow as a city into the future. The gas tax, depending on how much you wanted to use from the General Fund Reserve, could be anywhere from zero to $3.5 million that we would move to the library. Again, pros, we could fund that with our existing resources, gives us some flexibility in how much gas tax and General Fund contribution you want to make. The large, or the cons on this is a large General Fund contribution, gas tax may be decreased in other parts of the city, and we have some, a less robust, although still functional, Paseo and Parking Lot 10. And then finally, this would reduce the scale of the project to just do the rehab. There's a lot of pros to that, we don't have any of this funding problem. I think the cons though are evident in that we would not be able to gain any of the benefits of the rehabilitated building. That's my report, and that's our, the alternatives that we have. Again, as Mr. Ochoa had mentioned, we wanted to present this to you, give some of the other members time to think about it, you to think about it. If you have any initial feedback, we'd certainly like that, and then we will go back and, it's most likely in two weeks we'll come back, so that we have some idea of what you're looking for, and we can develop a recommendation for you.
Thank you. I have no cards, so it's up to us, Mr. Quintero.
We're not going to make a decision.
Not today, no.
This afternoon. Well, generally speaking, I am for doing the entire project. I think the downtown needs it, the library certainly needs it, and I don't think, I mean, we've waited long enough. I think it's a missing piece in the downtown, so my vote's going to be to proceed, finish it off from the alley to the Paseo, to all of the rehab in the library, and making our Central Park the real gem that I know it's going to be. Then in terms of the financing, I'm open to all of the different combinations. Personally, I think the Bond Reserve combo is the best bet, but I'm open to whatever we need to do to get the project done.
You, Mr. Najarian.
Was there a sixth op, was there another?
That's me.
I might talk. Okay. I, okay, here's, here's what I think. I am very hesitant to dip into our General Fund Reserves for this. Very hesitant, because that's going to create a series of events where we're going to have to start backfilling that reserve. I'm very hesitant in taking our gas tax money. That gas tax money is used throughout the city for a multitude of projects, and I don't think you touched on that. I think to give us a clear picture, you've got to tell us, what do we use that gas tax money for? I know it's roadways, it's our B-line service, it's signal lights, it's many things, and I'd like to hear what that gas tax is. So it shouldn't be some amorphous, you know, line item on a spreadsheet where it says-
It is capital replacement, streets resurfacing.
Citywide.
These are the things that we say are crumbling, citywide. I'm very hesitant to dip into that gas tax. I've got to be honest. And I'm wondering, is there, you know, if those 2011 bonds are going to have a verdict on them, or have a challenge that would somehow free that money up, I would be willing to wait until we know that there's a clear, a clean stream of money. I don't want to go into the reserves. To me, the reserves are for a emergency situation. I don't see this as an emergency. And our gas tax funds, this is what people are screaming and very vocal about, about the status and the quality of our streets, our roadways, all the capital infrastructure, curbs, the sidewalks, B-line system, so, you know, I-
So you don't like any of them?
I don't, well, I don't like the gas tax money, and I don't like spending the reserves.
Well, that takes up the five.
I'm just, you know, unless there's a decision that's going to come down the pike on the 2011 bonds.
But what I can say to you is, is that if you wanted, you could start repaying debt service with your proceeds, and thereby making the move, cause that savings, about $750,000. You could do that if you wanted. You would forego $35 million of bond proceeds, but you could make that decision yourself, and you could make it each year, to say, you know what, we're going to use proceeds this year to pay the debt service. That will free up property tax, which will get distributed to the city, that you can know, I'm going to set that aside for my General Fund Reserve, or replenish that. That is a decision that you can make on your own, regardless of whether the legislature says you can use those bonds or not.
One question, why does the, you know, in some of the scenarios, we were spending up to $13 million of the 2010 bonds, the 2010 bonds, but in the reduced scale of library, we're down to 2.2 million. Why can't we reduce the scale of library and not have the $15 million budget, but have a budget that's in the $10 million range?
I will, I'll defer, I think, a little bit to Cindy. I think what the, what the reasoning behind that is, is something less than the $15 million is not going to achieve what we want. A lot of things are interlocked, or you go all the way down to just doing the structural. So it's, there really isn't something in between, because a lot of the elements are interconnected. The systems are connected, the outdoor improvements are connected, the rearrangement of the interior spaces, they're all connected. Unless you do it all, you wouldn't do the project. It just wouldn't make sense.
Unless you're going to change the entire vision-
Exactly.
-that was arrived at previously.
Sometimes our vision has to change, in light of our financial constraints. For instance, why do we have to move that, and I haven't seen plans, why do we have to move that staircase from the one corner to the other? I'm sure that's an expensive proposition. Is that such an important part of the concept and design?
In the past leading up to this, it was important, from the council's perspective, to have the library serve as that southern anchor that looks straight up Maryland, that anchors the Arts and Entertainment District. The question, and it's a very valid question, to come back to the council, is with $35 million in taxable bond proceeds, sitting just inside the glass case that you just can't touch at this point, should you change your vision in order to downscale what the vision is in order to live just with that which you have today? Or do you hold on to the vision that you've created, hoping and trusting that either the bond proceeds, the 2011 bond proceeds, will avail themselves to you either by defeesing the bonds, or the state allowing cities to use those bonds? And that's part of the discussion to you.
But that's a gamble, I mean-
Well, it goes back to Mr. Weaver's point.
The sense that you're taking a risk on an unknown occurrence. We may have thoughts, we may have hunches, we may have systems, you know, everyone has a system. But I see what you're saying, I mean, why cut it short if next year they say, okay, here's your $35 million, say, oh, too bad, we just downscaled the project and-
But I think that's Mr. Weaver's point of option six, is don't do anything at all.
I haven't, I haven't said anything yet.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to steal your thunder there.
Just because I briefed you.
Yeah, you did.
I'll wait my turn.
Okay, I'm, those are just my thoughts on it.
Okay. Option six, in my view, we have to build the whole project. It has to be done right. I disagree that we have an entertainment on North Maryland, but I think that the entrance to the library should be on Harvard. So, and I hate to do a project halfway or truncated down, we want that to be a lasting entity in the city, and it has to be done right. Having said that, we just went through a tough budget cycle, trying to balance the budget, saying we had no fat in the budget. We have told all the employee associations, don't look for big raises and stuff, yet we're looking at options of taking out of the reserves for this, which is not a critical project. Structurally, it is not falling down. So what do we tell the people of Glendale and the employees? We're digging up, we found a way to get $15 million for a project, that should be done, but is not essential at this moment. So I don't want to do it partway, I want the whole thing, but I don't like any of the alternatives. I don't like borrowing from the General Fund Reserve. We've done that, dipped in that a few times, I don't like doing that. Gambling on what the state is going to do, I don't care to gamble. So the only alternative I can see is we postpone, until we know we have the money legitimately, without going into reserves. We have bond money or whatever to do it. I don't want to take gas tax money. We get complaints that we are not fixing our sidewalks, we're not fixing our streets. My God, the city is falling apart at the seams. And if we do this, we're taking money from that program, and we'll get ripped by certain people, if not everybody. Why are you doing this? Libraries function well enough as it is. What's so critical? It's higher priority than the streets? No, I can't argue that point, I won't argue it. So my position, as Mr. Quintero said, do the whole thing when we do it, but as Mr. Najarian said, not in the reserves and stuff, postpone it. If next year we can, or the year after that, council will be ready to move. And I want to see the funds in hand and not take a gamble or take reserves.
Just two items, and we can certainly do that if that's-
Four, let me say a few more. Okay, now that I see where the argument is headed, although we do have two other votes, let me say this. The library, now is a standalone structure, in my opinion, it needs to be redone, I think we all agree to that, just a question of how to find the money, what to do. But then the outside portion of this project, that to me is completely 100% essential. You know, what point are we going to do something for that part of the city, for that part of Brand, et cetera? So my question is, approximately how much would it cost to do the alley, to do the Paseo, to sort of complete all of the exterior work on this project? Does anyone know?
You mean, you mean non-structural?
Yeah.
Of the building itself, but just the grounds and stuff around it?
How much is that? Does anybody have a general ballpark?
I can tell you that the Paseo and the lot, including the right-hand turn lane, is about $3.5 million, because we've got to relocate a sewer to accommodate a swap. On the other, I don't know that we have it broken down exactly, like, because you would want to take certain elements. You would certainly want to do the north and south and realign that to then tie in with the Paseo. I'm not sure that we've broken it down like that.
Okay, but the bare minimum is three and a half to complete the exterior Central Park.
You know, we had about three and a half to do the Paseo and the lot, there was about $3 million of exterior improvements in plazas, step areas, landscaping, that we were looking at on the library. But again, those were to receive a north-south access, so moving that, and when you start to do that-
So we do, we do have options. We don't just have to sit around for the next couple of years if the other two members aren't interested in-
Mr. Quintero, it's like the east is the entrance, but if that is closed off, comes to the north, we're going to be doing exterior work, which if we did it, there wouldn't be an entrance in, period.
Yeah, no, I know, but the Paseo, the parking lot you're calling, it's actually a ugly alley, but all of that ties to the Central Park without going into the library, without going into the structure.
Correct.
And that is approximately three and a half.
Yes. I was going to say, Mr. Weaver, we can certainly do postpone if that's the desire of the council. We would reapply for tax credits, New Market Tax Credits, for the next year, and hope that we gain the similar amount of interest. By that time, we can certainly hone our story and hope to be able to attract the same investors. Less of a concern, but something to think about, is the 2010 bonds, while they have a clock ticking on them when the proceeds should be used, I think everybody acknowledges that the dissolution has really disrupted that. So nobody's really sure what that rule is now. I would think it's safe to say though, that we have some period of time, a year or two, but just to keep in the back of your mind that that clock is ticking on those. And then the third thing, again, I want to make sure, and not any misunderstanding, the decision to generate savings on 2011 bond proceeds resides with you. Regardless of what the legislature does, you could elect to do that, to pay those bonds off with the proceeds that we have, and thereby freeing up property tax that would be distributed to the city. Again, when you do that, then you forego, if in the future, the legislature says, okay, go ahead and use them. We know that there's not an easy answer to any of these.
So for me, it's option six.
So where exactly is the $35 million of the 2011 bonds?
Those are sitting in successor agency accounts, right now.
Accruing less than 1%.
And we're accruing the obligation to pay tax on them, I mean, pay the interest, the return on those?
Or we're paying the principal and interest, yes. And so to the extent, if the foreseeable worst-case scenario is that we would take the proceeds and begin to pay principal and interest, and then free up on the back end money, that's $750,000 to $800,000 that would come back to us as just another taxing entity. money, that's 750 to 800,000 that would come back to us as just another taxing entity. The, the problem there is that you're taking your proceeds and basically just eating it each year and then heaven forbid, in a couple of years, the state of California says, hey, tell you what, now you can use those proceeds, but by then we've used a good chunk of it to pay debt service.
So is the decision on those, on the bound, on the bond funding, part of the ROPS process?
Yes.
And the next hearing is, or decision is, it's twice a year, right?
Come up in July or August. What you would do is, if that's, was your wish, we would put the debt service payment for those bonds and we would list it as other, other revenue or other source. And then when we were asked about it, we'd say, we're using the taxable bond proceeds. I think once you commit, you know, you're all in, as Mr. Ochoa says, you will start to eat that pretty quickly. You'll get to a point where in seven or eight years, you go through your, your proceeds to pay off that, that debt service.
Does the-
And that, and I'm sorry, that won't, that won't completely pay it off because you'll be accruing interest.
Right, right. Does the Department of Finance consider the use of that bond, of those bond proceeds in their determination as to whether it's a ROP, recognized as a ROP? In other words, if we tell them, look, this is our library, it's, you know, a very, you know-
The statute just says you can't use it. That's why we were so hopeful about 981, that would unlock it. The, to them, it's, it's just, for Department of Finance, it effectively doesn't exist until we, until we do something that they would allow, i.e. the payment of debt service. Because ultimately, that's what the state of California wants, is to get us out of the, the property tax collection business and, and as long as there's debt outstanding, we're still in that business and they want to get us out.
But what's ironic about this is you would go, you would use the proceeds for six or seven years, then you would have to go back and claim property tax to continue to pay the debt service.
And they would have no choice but to pay that-
You would have no choice but to-
-debt service and approve it as part of the ROPS. The, the downside, the reason why we've been resistant to that is that we're hopeful, common sense will take hold in the, in the state and they'll see that that $35 million can be used for economic development and, and public infrastructure as opposed to just paying principal and interest.
Common sense.
All right. We, as Mr. Gindetto had indicated, we still have two members who are not here and so as Phil indicated, I was, I, I got my weeks messed up. We would hold this over for a couple of weeks, continue to answer your questions, talk with the other two members of, of successor agency and council and, and truly try to, to get the, the best thinking, the most complete thinking of the council, because it's a pretty momentous step about what we do and, and how it goes forward.
You certainly haven't got direction here today.
I think we got a, a lot of good feedback, what we needed to hear.
Feedback, not direction.
Let me just extend the discussion, if you would permit, Mr. Mayor. About a year ago, we talked about a library bond, a library parcel fee to be put on the ballot. And I was against that because I felt it was unfair to individual property owners to bear the cost of a full portion of the tax where others, typically the ones using the library are those apartment dwellers and their children. If there is another way to, in a fair manner, assess a, a bond, a library bond or a library fee across the community, I would support that. My objection a year ago was that it was unfair to a single family homeowner that perhaps is retired and would hardly have any use for a library to get a additional 100, $200 a year tax bill. I'm not sure what the number was. While others who are the true users may not pay directly into that. If there's something that you can come up with that's, that's equitable, don't forget, we have an election in June. It's not that far around the corner, so don't close the book on that. Although I'm, you know, the key word to me is fair and equitable across the community.
Thank you. You've heard from the three of us. Stay tuned. Well, we didn't, we didn't give a direction, we just gave input.
I'm ready to give you direction, don't worry about that.
I know.
But follow my direction.
Since when? I think you better make a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn second.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Is that for the council? Wait, is that the council?